Going to get going. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order of the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for April fifteenth, 2019. Kathleen, could you tell, take a roll call and let us know who's here?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Uring.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, let's see. Tony, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You did such a good time last job.
And on your art, please repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Approval of the agenda.
I move the approval of, I move the agenda be approved as staff recommends with, um, nothing continued.
Right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Kathleen, tell us about posting the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April fifth, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on April tenth, 2019.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Richard, you're going to give us another update on the fire stats? Is that a ceremony presentation this evening?
Yes, that is correct.
You're on, my friend.
So to give you a quick update of the progress made since the last planning commission meeting, we've issued twenty-four approvals for temporary housing, and that's now working its way through the building and safety department. We've issued a total of sixty-six planning verifications and sixty-six, uh, sixty-six acts, sixty-six applications in and sixty-six approved, and nine of those are in the building plan check phase right now. And then when it comes to administrative plan reviews, only one is in building plan check. Two have been approved, and we have another eight making up ten so far that we are currently reviewing. And some of those are homes with additions to it that are, say, require a site plan review. They're either a reduced side yard setback or asking for height above eighteen feet. And then the other, other ones that we have are for landscaping and new hardscape and things they did not have before. This slide goes over the statistics of what we're seeing in terms of cleanup on sites. For the local program, we've got fourteen sites that have been completed, sixteen of which are also waiting for, and this is an additional sixteen to that fourteen, are ready for their final inspection, and eighty-three properties have requested an extension, but they are in progress. And there are forty-two properties that are completed that have been part of the state's program. And the city is now down to two unresponsive properties. That number was twenty-five at our last meeting, and so greatly reduced. This slide goes over some statistics regarding plan check submittals and projects that are in the plan check process. We have, as I mentioned, nine single-family residences, and then eight of folks, or excuse me, eleven, where folks are trying to see if they could reuse their foundation. Two permits have been issued for reconstruction of single-family homes, and those were two structures that were already undergoing some sort of work. So their plans had already been plan checked and permits issued. However, because the whole house burned down, in one case it was a remodel, they had to come back so we could look at the rest of the house that was supposed to remain. And then we've got a hundred and sixty-two permits issued for the debris removal on the primary residence and seventeen for secondary structures. This information is for folks who have questions about debris removal. The county still is operating their debris removal operations center in Calabasas, and it is open Monday through Friday as well as a Saturday. That information is available at, on the city's website, malibu city dot org and Malibu Rebuilds. And then also, if anybody has a question about what it is they could put back, they want to know about square footage, setbacks, whatever their concerns are, they can set up an appointment with one of our consulting planners, Shweta Sharma, and her email address is on this slide, or someone can come to City Hall at our fire rebuild counter, and they can either set an appointment date and time then, or if we have time to talk, we'll be glad to assist them at that moment. Some upcoming events, as we've mentioned in the past, there is a rebuilding resilience workshop that's going to be on the twenty-seventh of April. And then also, there's going to be an insurance workshop, and that's the following day, a Sunday, on the twenty-eighth. And our last slide here just goes over some of the resources for the residents, which these resources can also be found on the city's website. If anybody has any questions there, they can type in Malibu Rebuilds on the city website. And the other option too, as always, is if they call the planning department and use extension four-eight-five, it will allow you to leave a message on our voicemail, and that message will get to the fire rebuild folks so that we can give you a call back and answer any questions you have. And we can also be reached just at our generic email address, which is Malibu Planning at Malibu City dot org.
Richard? Thank you again.
You're welcome.
John, go ahead.
Richard, have any of the, um, foundation feasibility requests been granted?
I can find out for you. That's being handled by our building safety division through environmental sustainability, but I can get an answer for you if they've been able to reuse it. My understanding is that it is difficult to do, because what you need to do is find a structural engineer to go out, do either, usually it starts with what they call non-destructive testing before they start drilling holes in it. But you're looking for an engineer to sign off that foundation can support whatever it is you're trying to put back. And a lot of times it's hard, because you're asking an engineer who didn't witness the construction of that foundation to certify it, essentially putting his license on the line for that foundation.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff?
Yeah, Richard, um, this is not even the city, but so you may not know the answer to this, but I understand that, that Water District Twenty-nine is charging fees in the order of several thousand dollars to reinstall the water meters that they removed from burned-out houses. And, uh, do you, while you're getting reports for us, do you think you could come back with a report at our next meeting and, and give us a rundown on the nature of those fees and, and the basis for them and, and why they seem to vary from property to property by fifty, seventy-five percent? But it would be helpful if you could, if you could get that information for us and, and bring it back to us.
Very good. And what you're mentioning, actually, I think I heard one resident, we were trying to understand that last week, why the Water District was asking them for some fees.
If I can just piggyback on that, I, I, I don't know if it's the same resident, but I heard of one last week where it's an existing house, they're rebuilding in kind, and the Water District wanted six thousand-plus dollars for, basically to keep the service as it was already existing.
And then just a procedure one, maybe to Bonnie, with sixty-six and then two, it's kind of the high-level numbers, are those going to be coming across, these are docks, our normal docks, or that, I couldn't remember the process, if those will be kind of coming...
For fire rebuilds?
Yeah.
Only, the only instance where they would come to the planning commission is if somebody is going to just do a whole new project that is an entirely different house, potentially reciting it, adding new accessory development and that sort of thing. So far, we have not had anyone submit that kind of a project, just had some consultation with one property owner about that as a potential project.
Got it. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, just two quick ones. Southern California Edison, the, one of the Edison guys was on my street last week looking at trees they were going to cut down. And started talking to them, and, and they're going to do some damage to a couple of the trees there, and I'm just wondering, when they cut them down, did they remove the stumps? I mean, it's going to be kind of rude if they come on your property and cut your tree down and said, then you got to pay to get rid of the thing. So, I don't, I mean, just, I don't know if you got an answer, but...
Um, that, I think that question might have been asked at, following the council presentation that they made last week, and they said, as I recall, that they would cut it down to the ground, but they don't grind out the whole stump.
Good for California Edison, okay. And just, go ahead. And one, you know, there was a meeting they had here with the Lessons from Australia, which I guess was pretty, was that thing taped? Is that going to be?
Yes, it was recorded, so it'll be available
Cool.
From the city's website.
Thank you very much. Craig, you got one more?
Yeah, um, on, on that Edison and the stump thing, they did say that there's a negotiation involved in getting permission to cut things, and if pressed, they would, they might agree to grinding the stump down in some circumstances, but they didn't say why or how, what those conditions might be. And I have more comments on the Edison stuff. I don't know if it's now or commissioner comment time. I don't know procedurally where that goes.
If you'd like to do Edison now, do it.
Or maybe, I think, you, you look like you're, okay, maybe I'll talk after her then.
Very good. Okay. Anybody else? Richard, and again, city staff, thank you, guys, you're doing heck of a job. I mean, everybody I'm talking to appreciates the work you're going through, so thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to written and oral communication from the public. Do we have any speaker slips? Okay, we've got one, two, three speakers, four speakers. Paul Goodman, you're up first, followed by Pat Healy, followed by Norm, and then Judy, you're up last. So, Paul, you get three minutes.
All right.
And the clock over there will sort of tell you where you are, because our regular clock isn't working.
Okay. All right, my name is Paul Goodman, I'm the founder of Goodman Media, and I have looked for an area to begin a local web-based radio outlet for local citizens. And so there's no question that, having lived here before, that Malibu, I've been here for a period of time, but I own the local boo dot com. And so what this is, is an opportunity to, for locals, the roots of Malibu to get together and discuss things. So we bring freedom of speech back. It's like a private forum. But I do include a, you know, another form of a club that's with this, and it's called Forty-Nine Plus. And so I came up with this two years ago, that people my age, my age and older, we connect very well, we communicate very well. So why don't we have a section that's just geared for that, and that is just, it's just better conversation. Quality talk is quality medicine. And so for us that are over fifty-one, I'm turning fifty-one and older, we could, could have some great discussions and keep it within that realm. It streams live music, and I have a variety of shows that can be coming up, but the main focus is to pull people together. So I own Goodman Media, my model behind that is coming to a zip code near you. And why not start? I've lived here before, I've always admired the city, and therefore I, I have something new for, for the people of Malibu to partake in, and so I encourage you to go to the site, the local boo dot com, and, and contact me, and it'll be fun to see its growth.
Excellent.
All right?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Pat, you're up next.
Good evening, everyone.
And Norm has given you...
Do we have a clock?
Yeah. The clock's over there on the side, the, on the desk, that little... Okay, so you've got four minutes, Pat.
Okay, thank you. As a representative of slow growth, I have two things I'd like to mention tonight. I keep hearing that Whole Foods is about to open any, at any, any day now. My question is, have all their conditions of approval been met? And if not, what ones still have to be met? The second thing I'd like to discuss is the community-wide concern regarding Edison's indiscriminate tree destruction plan in the name of safety. Edison told the city council there are five thousand trees in Malibu that are going to be impacted by the cutting, a twelve-foot, cutting a twelve-foot radius to protect their wires. They said their authority comes from the Public Utilities Commission, but their representatives said that the twelve feet was a recommended amount and doesn't appear to be mandatory. Edison said there will be a dramatic visual impact in Malibu from this project. In many instances, this brutal approach will result in leaving only tree trunk, tree trunks, limbs, and leaves will be destroyed, and others' trees will have a hard time surviving since the tree will not be getting enough nutrients for the energy it needs. There is no discernment in how Edison trims the trees around their wires. They're going to do it even if it's not needed. There is no balance between protection of the environment and safety. One way to see, to see that reasonableness prevails is for the city to take control and oversee it by issuing the required coastal development permit. The city can then insist Edison use a balanced approach. The coastal commission has told us that a CDP is required if there's a protected tree or any major vegetation removal. The counting is requiring a CDP. To avoid tree mutilation and destruction, why isn't the city requiring the same, especially since the work is to begin this, either this week or next? Reasonableness is the key, rather than haphazard butchering of trees. For most trees, a twelve-foot radius is not needed. Healthy trees, in most instances, have strong limbs and are designed to survive high winds, and the chances of healthy branches cracking and harming their lines is minuscule. At it, more than twenty-three thousand trees were lost locally in the Santa Monica Mountains due to the last fire. Now Edison is wanting to continue the devastation by chopping, topping, or over pruning more trees. Tree, our trees, we need them. Trees sequester carbon, trees give us oxygen. It is nesting season, and trimming trees with nests is prohibited. I was told yesterday Edison just chopped down a eucalyptus grove, which was a major monarch overwintering roosting site along Mulholland. Birds no longer have twenty-three thousand trees to nest in. For example, they plan to chop down palm trees, which are the favorite nesting sites for barn arrows and orioles. Even LCP-protected trees could be in danger. Edison's representative told the council they would try to maintain a four-and-a-half-foot circumference around oaks and sycamores. This doesn't mean that they will. Other protected trees, such as alders, walnuts, and toyon, they never said they would protect. Esha is also protected, Esha is also protected, and Edison failed to address how they would protect Esha areas, especially since they are clearing habitat within a twelve-foot radius of their poles. Edison's vegetation plan is not only a visual blight, but an environmental disaster, and I'd like the city to do something about it. Thank you.
Pat, thank you very much. Judy, you're up. First time you've been here with us.
Yeah, I'm Lana Kimerson. Thank you. My name is Judy Villa Blanca, and I'm here to also speak to you regarding the Edison Plan for Tree Trimming and Removal as a wildfire mitigation measure. I think we all know eighty-eight percent of the land in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area that's owned by the national park was burned, and this doesn't even include lands owned by other partner agencies such as state parks, which also burned. More than twenty thousand trees are estimated to have been killed by the fire. I had the pleasure last week of attending the lecture by Dr. Stephen Davis, who's a biology professor at Pepperdine, who studied the native plant response to fire in the Santa Monica Mountains for over thirty years. He showed us serial studies of local chapparal after a fire. While chapparal is very well-adapted to regrow after fire, it requires at least ten to twelve years. When fires happen more frequently, as has been the case in Malibu, chapparal does not have sufficient time to grow to generate seeds that germinate after fires, and chapparal is lost while invasive species flourish. Oak, sycamore, walnut, and alder trees also require prolonged recovery time. Trimming them early in their post-fire recovery may kill these trees. Our recent many years of drought have also placed extreme stress on our ecosystem. Dr. Davis pointed out quite strongly that we are now at risk for a complete collapse of the Santa Monica Mountains ecosystem due to the combined effects of drought, fire, and climate change. In light of all this, this is clearly the wrong time to add another stress to our ecosystem by trimming and removing native trees. And as Pat pointed out, this is now nesting season for birds that have lost much of their habitat in the Woolsey Fire. Edison's plan to remove five thousand trees in Malibu will further damage our ecosystem and violate the protections in place for native trees, which need to be enforced. The fear of fire, which justifies some rational tree trimming, should not be used to justify unnecessary environmental damage. Areas targeted by Edison overlap with large areas of Esha, and they affect trees protected under Malibu's native tree ordinance. A CDP, as Pat mentioned, is required under the coastal act for this proposal, and it also includes developing a mitigation plan for where tree trimming and removal needs to be done. This ordinance was created to recognize the importance of our native trees, which prevent erosion, moderate temperature, and provide food, nesting, and roosting cover for a wide variety of wildlife, and it was intended to protect and preserve these trees. Where there is no alternative to removal of native trees, there needs to be a mitigation plan in place, and that is required under this ordinance. This includes engaging a qualified, independent biological consultant or arborist to actually monitor the project, which is not being done. Malibu has a precious biodiversity of plants and animals that, many of which thrive here and nowhere else, and this biodiversity is being threatened by many impacts. We are at a point where Malibu could be changed forever. We don't need to add irrational tree trimming to these impacts. We all recognize the critical need to prevent and limit the extent of wildfires, but this does not have to be done disregarding the ecosystem. So in summary, I would propose that Edison should be required to obtain a CDP before beginning this trimming and removal, and this should also include a mitigation plan. The city needs to provide a qualified biologist on-site to limit tree damage, and this project should be postponed and starting until nesting season is over. In the Woolsey Fire burn areas, the risk of another fire is seven to ten years away. Everything, the fuel is gone, and it just simply doesn't justify the current emergency approach. So I'm asking that you enforce the required oversight, which is deserved by our native trees. Thank you.
Judy, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in public comment? If not, we'll close it, bring it back up to the commission table. Commissioners.
Okay, I'll speak right on that. I know there's been some question around about whether the city can order a CDP in this Edison context. It's, seems to be a jurisdictional question, and I can't speak to one half of it yet, not having done any research or looked into it, but just looking at the CPUC general order, the rules that control how they do the, the trimming, it seems that there's wide latitude for interpretation there. So, such that if, if the city does have the jurisdiction and the discretion to order a CDP, there's a lot of room within the CPUC rules in which the city discretion could operate. Specifically, the language calls for clearances that are necessary and reasonable. That's, so the city might be able to look at that and say, well, you know, what, what does reasonable mean in the unique Malibu context? The rule also puts a special emphasis on, quote, "dead, rotten, and diseased trees" or portions thereof, unquote, which might imply that healthy trees might get more of a pass to remain. There is actually a rule that says that contact between vegetation and conductors, meaning wires, in and of itself does not constitute a violation of the rule. So presumably, there may be situations where you could still have a wire touching a tree, and they would say that's okay. And then Edison is also required to make a, quote, "good faith effort" to obtain permission in every case. And if an owner says no, then Edison may not cut. And so maybe a CDP could, would have room there to look at what constitutes a good faith effort. And there's some, some language about liability and stuff that, that we don't need to parse right now, but just to point out that it seems like there would be some room for action if, in fact, the city can work a CDP, that that would fit within the state CPUC rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the same thing. I got a notice yesterday that they're going to come by sometime in the next sixty days and cut my trees. That was basically what the notice said. There was no, nothing that asked me. Now, I'm assuming that if the county can ask for a CDP and require one, we have just as good a standing as the county has, being a, a city. And we could issue a stop-work order. Now, they could contest it, but we could still issue a stop-work order. My question of Trevor is, if my personal house is in the appeal zone, and there are quite a few houses in the appeal zone, what, what recourse do I have to appeal to either the city or the coastal commission for a violation of not doing a CDP?
Bonnie can talk about the contact she's had with SCE and with the county about this issue. What's going to come into play here is whether there's substantial removal of vegetation, and there's some room for interpretation about what exactly that constitutes, because that is the bar for whether you need a CDP. And then SCE also is arguing whether they would fall under an exemption, even if it is substantial removal of vegetation, whether they're exempt from a CDP based on what they're constructing over there. So, coming into what rights you personally would have, I think it's going to stem from, from the action that's, realistically, it's going to stem out from the action the city's going to take in terms of, you know, what's being done on the property and what's, whether a CDP is required in that particular circumstance. Of course, you could take a writ action and say that, you know, the government's not taking the proper action that it needs to, but those people don't want to go and grab a lawyer and file a, a writ action if there's a, an issue like this. So, in any case, you know, the city I know is, is working to find a, a reasonable solution for SCE in terms of reducing the fire danger, but also protecting these trees. I don't know if you want to talk more about that, Bonnie?
Yeah, I just, just before you do, uh, we require them to come to us to put in a electrical vault.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that's substantial, why would five thousand trees not be substantial?
Well, that's different, because in your constructing, it falls under a different part of the, the definition of development. Here, we're talking about removing trees and not building a structure. They are trimming vegetation, and it needs to be a substantial removal of vegetation to require a CDP. So you can also, you know, if, if you think they're acting illegally, you can contact the city or contact code enforcement if you think they're taking illegal action. But as I said, you know, the city is in contact with SCE trying to deal with this.
If they remove a tree without asking, is that illegal action? What does that fall under?
Depends on what kind of, are we talking about a protected tree? Yes, I would say...
Not the tree on my yard. They won't remove it.
They're required to make good faith efforts to obtain permission.
What, what does that entail?
They're, they're supposed, they're...
Putting handcuffs.
They have information on their website, and they've asked us to post it on ours as well, that describes the, the steps in the process that they go through for all tree trimming and removal. They, they place door hangers, which it sounds like Commissioner Mazza's received so far. And then, if possible, they try to make direct contact with the property owner before doing any work. And they also make contact and person before doing any sort of removal or, or anything, just to try to get consent of the property owner, and if there's not consent, then there's a separate process where, you know, you have to sign a form and things like that.
That, and that falls under the, the CPUC regulations, those are requirements from the coastal act.
Right, right. These are CPUC processes that are in place.
And is this on the, on the website?
On their website?
Ours.
Um, we are posting information as we get it from them. I don't know if our media team has got it all posted yet, but I will follow up on that tomorrow.
And then they're, they're, they're coming, they could arrive tomorrow morning. What's the estimate of the time the city will resolve this?
Um, we're, I'm in contact with them most every day, and we're coordinating closely with the county for the, because we have a lot of the same issues. We're both concerned, county and the city, concerned about the potential environmental effects from... effects from this and also the, just the aesthetics of it. But at the same time, obviously, fire danger is a big concern as well, and Edison's under a lot of pressure to minimize fire danger to the extent that they can within their control. So we're trying to figure out the best path forward for this. I haven't been told by the county that they are requiring a CDP. They are looking at different options for trying to make sure that there's some oversight on Edison as they go through this whole process, whether it's an arborist or whatever. Edison has communicated to us that they are working hard to make sure that all of their crews are trained in all the protocols and for going through the nesting bird survey process and making sure that all of the crews know how to identify those things. And they've got environmental people that are going through and doing those in advance. But then, as the crews are going through, they're also supposed to be trained to recognize those circumstances where they shouldn't be doing trimming so that those can be avoided. So at this point, we're still in the coordination process, and we're looking at options to try to ensure that they're able to do their job, but we're able to make sure that they comply with the LCP at the same time. And looking closely at the order, it does appear that it's, the language is recommended minimum clearances, and so I'm trying to get clarification about that. I have noticed that in the presentations Edison has given that they do call, they have mentioned it as recommended clearances. So if, you know, if it's not mandatory that they trim 12 feet, then it'd be nice to be able to exercise some discretion about that where it makes sense.
So it sounds like if somebody is concerned about having Edison trim their trees, if Edison comes and says they're going to do that, and this person says no, it may not prevent it forever, but it'll slow it down a little bit.
Yeah, that's my impression.
There doesn't seem to be a way to say no. Now, at the last council meeting, Councilman Pearson asked that, when they gave their presentation, that they trim in eastern Malibu, since that's where the fire could come, and wait later for western Malibu since there's nothing to burn.
Right.
Are they considering any of that?
I got an email earlier, let's see, I think it came on today's Monday, right, yesterday, indicating that they have agreed, they agree about changing the order of the trimming zones. So yes, they are going to, after the zones that, the zone that starts, they call them grids, the grids five, six, and seven, which include the Bonzel area, part of Point Dume, and looks like some of Malibu Park, that will start soon, and then following that, they would go to the east side of town.
First and last guy to get screwed.
Anybody else? Commissioner Jennings?
Well, it's just, it's frustrating to listen to this, because, I don't know, all the fires that I've personally been through, I can only think of two that began in Malibu, and neither one of them was related to electrical interference. So it would be nice if they would be, start the program over in Agura and Hidden Hills and that area.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I was just looking through the photos I took in our community on December 9th, because back in the back, we have MRCA, we have state parks, you know, we have federal parks. There is nothing on the hills back there. No trees survived from everything I could see. It's just toasted. And so just thinking through, in our little microcosm, if we do go and hack trees back, there's like nothing to come back at all. So, you know, this is concerning. We had lost access to our community for about two months because everything just kept flooding out because there's nothing to hold the dirt back on the hill. Now, you could argue, well, you know, other growth has come in, all that aside, it just doesn't seem logical not to, you know, make, just make us, make ourselves heard, you know, work at this in the right order. Go from the side of town, didn't burn yet, come back to the other when it's a little more stable. I mean, obviously, we're already kind of talking that one through. The one question that I would ask, though, that I don't think we've covered yet, I know there was an emergency, some emergency work done on a lot just south of City Hall here to stage for this SCE work. Was there any kind of agreement we already have with SCE that obligates the city to allow them to do the work? Or are we still in a position where we do have the potential to fight?
I'm glad you asked that, because other people may be wondering, the tree trimming vegetation management program is completely unrelated to the Edison lot, lay down property, lay down lot that they put on the property, known as the Bell property, just south of City Hall. The Bell property is being used as a staging area for the inspections of the actual equipment and upgrades to the equipment that they're doing, but it has nothing to do with the vegetation part of the work that is now being discussed.
Okay, and then, I mean, just to kind of, you know, throw the obvious out there, if they've got to do equipment work, you know, do that where the fire's already hit, do the trimming work where it hasn't, you know, just try to, just do things logically, because this side of town just can't take much more pressure, I would say, from what I've seen. So I just echo the other comments from the commissioners here, and, you know, just try to do this as smart as we can, you know, whatever you can help to influence that, yeah.
Yeah, so Bonnie, anything you can do to either working with the SEC or with, even with, let the city council know that there's a growing concern about taking these trees down, and maybe they can come back and revisit it and squeeze a little harder than we could.
Okay, I'd be glad to.
I've got a couple of quick ones. An observation, you know, I'm driving, I never used to look at people building stuff until I got in the planning commission. You know, there appears to be a fair amount of unpermitted construction going on in our fair little city, which is just, you know, I mean, I drive around, you look for that yellow tag someplace, right? And you say, no, yellow tag. So I don't know what that means. I guess to get unpermitted construction, somebody's got to call there, it's got to be a complaint. We don't go out and hunt that down.
Well, I mean, if a staff person identifies it or whatever, then yes, we'll deal with it when it's, as soon as it's identified. But if it's something that staff hasn't come across for one reason or another, then yeah, it would be a complaint-driven thing.
Come up a little finder's fee if you do that. Start a little business over here, you know, retire, make some money. Whole Foods has come up a number of times now, and I guess, we'll come back to the walls, because I met Steve Soboroff middle of last week. But I mean, is there any chance that their permit, they could get a permit to open up without meeting all the conditions of their coastal development permit?
Condition compliance is a requirement in order to get the certificate of occupancy and open up.
Okay.
I mean, there have been instances where, you know, if, and this happens with single-family residences also, if there is some aspect of the conditions of approval that they need a few, you know, some additional time for, there is a conditional certificate of occupancy that can be issued to allow for that to get resolved, whatever that might be.
Which department issues the occupancies permit?
The Building Safety Department.
Okay. So is there somebody there that, when they get ready to give that, is going to have a list of all the things that Whole Foods had complied with?
We work very closely with Building Safety. They look at all of the building code issues, and we look all of the, the planning department monitors all the planning conditions.
So there will be a list of both of those? Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get that list?
Sure, I mean, the conditions of approval are in the, is the resolution.
But here's, okay, just one man's opinion. When this Whole Foods came in front of the voters back a couple of years ago, 60% of the people said they didn't want it. Now, that bridge is gone. I mean, we're under, that's got, that can't go back there. However, I think it would be good for the residents to see that Steve is complying with the stuff he's got to comply with, and that the city staff has got their back, right? That we're making sure that nobody's slipping through the cracks, especially a big one like that. So that, if that list exists, or that table exists with somebody checking it off, I try and get it published in the Surfside News. Let people see it. And it'd be good for Steve also, if he's met all the conditions, it'll demonstrate he's trying to be a good neighbor, okay? So think about that. I'll chase that one down. And get back to Pat's comment. I met Steve Soboroff last Wednesday, I guess it was, I was walking through, and we talked a little bit about his living green walls. And first, Steve told me to thank you, John, because apparently you've been talking to him about that, and he, good you're paying attention. But, I mean, so after that, we talked a little bit, and he said, and he was going, he headed out, but he was going to jump on it. So this week, they put a little bit of green wall up there in some of the buildings, if you, okay. But he's got to put in 22,000 square feet of green walls. And I think he's got like 2,000 up there right now, so he's got a way to go. So, and that was the biggie. I mean, that was the one that he, they volunteered to do that in exchange for an open space requirement. So open space is important to us here. So, okay, keep your eyes open for that one, and I'll get back to on the list, because I'd like to get that, something like that published. Anything else, guys? All right? Closed public, or the commissioner comment? Consent calendar?
Before you move to consent calendar?
I apologize.
That's okay. I just, I only actually have one thing on my list to mention. The commission is already aware of this, but I wanted to announce it for the sake of the public as well, that there is a special planning commission meeting planned for two weeks from now on April 29th. This is a month that has five Mondays, so we normally wouldn't have another meeting. But the purpose of this meeting is for the planning commission to consider a coastal development permit for the Point Dume Elementary, Juan Carrillo Elementary realignment project. That project has a very tight timeline, and so the commission was gracious enough to agree to a special meeting, so that will be two weeks from now on April 29th.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 3A1 and 3A2, please.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull 3B2 and 3B3.
Is there anything left on the consent calendar?
3B1 I want to pull.
Okay, so it looks like we pulled everything on the consent calendar?
You said 3B3, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and we've got some public speakers. For, so let's go to 3A1.
Okay, 3A1 and 3A2. The issue before us is whether the resolution that's been presented by staff is the, is the resolution that reflects the action that we took back at the meeting, and that's really the only issue. On the other hand, it's important to allow the applicant to make whatever record the applicant wants to make, and so I pulled it to allow the applicant to have an opportunity to make whatever record they choose.
Fine. And, I don't have a problem. And they get three minutes to do that, Trevor?
Three, yeah.
Okay? And I agree with your, I mean, I think our main job here tonight is to memorialize the vote that we took at the last meeting. That's our primary job, so.
Right.
Okay.
Disclosures?
Disclosures.
None. Well, except, I was asked by the project architect if I would pull it from the calendar, and I said yes.
Ah, okay.
None.
I did talk with Tony a bit about some of the ideas that he's going to discuss tonight, and didn't learn anything beyond what's in his submittal in that discussion.
And I also had a conversation with Tony, again, covering most of the stuff that was in his letter that he sent to us, so nothing new on that one. Okay, so let's open up the public comment.
Before we do that, I wanted to give Richard a moment to make a change.
Staff recently learned some new information, and we did confirm this with the Coastal Commission. So on item 3A2 and resolution number 9-16, we'd like to remove the language on condition number 26 that references public access and have it strictly reference just the view corridor. Staff did confirm with the Coastal Commission that the staircase that's located directly adjacent to the restaurant area of the hotel is not actually a public access. It's an access for hotel guests only. The Coastal Commission informed us that the only two public accesses that are required of the owner of the property are the two staircases that, well, one already exists and one will be built in the state parking lot directly adjacent to their existing open parking area that's on the pier side of the structure. So in that condition number 26, there is a reference to maintaining a view corridor and being consistent with all of the previously issued coastal development conditions. That part would remain, but once again, just the parts referencing public access and signage for public shoreline access would be removed from that condition.
Okay. A quick question on that one, Richard. If, just reading that item, it kind of ends, if I'm reading the right section, it ends with "in addition" and then drops off. Was that intentional?
That's where I started to write about the signage and then ended up moving it to the upper sentence. Too much going on.
Also, to clarify, the construction that's going on right now between the parking lot and the hotel, that's part of one of the state accesses that you're talking about?
Yes, the, there's an accessway there that already exists that I believe they're working on, and the state's also putting in a walkway. That's directly adjacent to their parking lot. That's, but those are the two accesses that the consent agreement, I believe it's called, points out, and then also the coastal development permit from 1987.
Okay. Can we get the exact language of the?
Yeah.
Is it, we're removing everything after the first sentence?
It would be on the first sentence, removing the public, or excuse me, leaving the public access, we would remove subject to approval of a signed permit. The property must, the property owner must install public shoreline access. That would be removed, and then just the "in addition."
So you're just removing the second sentence and the "in addition" at the end?
No, removing the word "public access" is in the first sentence.
And the word "and public access" at the first sentence, is that your intention, Richard?
Only for public access on their property, not the consent agreement.
Could I suggest you just read the section as you want it to appear?
I think we should leave it to say, the property must adhere with the conditions of approval for coastal development permit 5-87-576, including the view corridor, and I believe we should leave public access because it references not the ones on their property as I thought, or as we thought it would reference the public access that is required in the state parking lot.
Do we want to call it offsite public access?
Sure.
You don't think you need to, because it just says to comply with the conditions of approval of the CDP, so it, there's no reason to either specify or cut out from there. So you're saying just remove the second sentence, Richard?
And then remove at the very end the words "in addition."
Okay.
Yep, yep. Just remove the second sentence and then just the words "in addition."
Trevor, during the hearing, I did ask about that access, and was told it was one of the accesses. Does that mean it needs to be re-noticed?
Uh, no.
Okay.
This is, the reason for that condition was because there was, at the time, staff believed that there was public access through the center of the hotel. Since that doesn't exist, it would make sense to remove that portion of the condition.
Yeah, but my question is, I asked if that was the public access, and they said yes. So that's the way the record read.
Yes, but it's been.
So now we're changing the record without a hearing, right?
Well, the record's been corrected by Richard, so that this is all part of the record on the, of the item itself. If you want to keep the, that language in there, you could keep it in, but since there isn't public access in that area, it would really have no effect.
No, I'm just, this is just procedural. I mean, somebody comes back and says, well, we didn't, we said the wrong thing last time, but we'll change it.
This is not a substantive change, since it's, since there isn't a public access there. If you were making a change to one of the substantive conditions of how it was operating, that would be different. We're memorializing the decision there, but since there was an error of fact in terms of what the permit itself said about where the public access is located, I would consider this to be just a correction of a, of a fact that was incorrect.
Okay, gotcha.
And just to put it another way, that CDP number 587576 specifies exactly where the access is, so we're falling back to that, public access as defined there.
So they still need to comply with the conditions of approval of that as they would otherwise?
Okay.
All right, everybody ready? Let's open up the public hearing. We have a bunch of speaker slips. Tony, you're first.
Thank you.
I'm Tony, Tony Kanzaneri, and I was going to put my timer on because I can't see that one very well.
Quick favor, Tony, what exactly, does he have, three minutes?
You got three minutes. Are you getting time from the rest of these people?
Well, why don't we start? They may give me some time, but.
I think, should we clarify that?
Yes.
Right.
I've got 3A1, I've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Yeah, they're all the same parties, how does that work?
So this, it sees as a public comment, so you get three minutes plus one minute for each.
And they could all, okay.
Or they could, or they could speak individually.
Individually.
And it's because they don't have the normal 15 minutes, so they're treating it as just like any other public speaker. And it's because they don't have the normal 15 minutes, so they're treating it as just like any other public speaker time?
Right. Okay, go ahead, Tony.
How many minutes are you giving him?
He's got three. And if he wants to adjust it, you gotta let us know.
Thank you very much. Chair Euring, members of the council, I appreciate your indulging us in our respectful request for reconsideration. I heard the comment from Commissioner Jennings, and I'm not sure if there's unanimity in that, that you're not interested in, in the reconsideration, but we would like you to consider it, because let me start with the fact that we felt there may have been misunderstandings about the conditions we were willing to impose on the approval. And I think they're important, because I think they really deal with the concerns you have that mostly emanate from the, the difficult situation you're dealing with at, down the road at Soho and Nobu. Number one, we would agree not to move cars during peak hours, so you're not going to have anybody going across. We don't need that parking across the street. Back to the historical experience at the hotel is we have more parking than we need. Number two, we thought that a very constructive idea was the idea that you could solve the, some of the Soho, Nobu problem by having those employees park offsite. And you may have locations where that could occur, and they could be shuttled. Even though, again, our employees, we would agree in a condition to park across the street because we have excess parking, we would participate in that as good neighbors, members of the business community, and to try to help you facilitate a solution. And we thought that was important. We would also provide ride sharing and incentives for the use of public transportation to our employees, which we think is an important condition that, that we would agree to add. And finally, we want to remind you again and ask you to please consider that we don't have an impact on traffic. We don't have an impact on parking the way you're dealing with the other situation. When you look at the attachment to the letter, you'll see that the numbers are quite startling. Our area is one-tenth the area of those other properties. And we have 50% more parking per restaurant seat. And our restaurant seats are taken up largely by people that are already parked, or came through an Uber or some other means, as hotel guests. So, it's really very lopsided for you to paint us with that brush, and we'd just like to request that you give us a fair hearing. I have a traffic engineer here in case during these four years we haven't already answered all the questions that you might have. The Mannys are here as well. We are here to, one last time, ask you to please consider a fair and just solution here. That's my three-minute timer. So with that, we're here to answer questions, and we'd like to, to have a discussion about it with you.
Okay. Anybody else? Simon, you want to speak? This is Simon Manny.
Simon Manny. Chair, Commissioner, thank you for taking your time. Happy tax, tax day today.
Yeah.
And we, we really have done everything to please you, or try to accommodate, to get everybody to respond here. We're trying to get this pool, not just because we want a pool. We always said, you have high tide, you have low tide. You really have no beach up front of our hotel. I mean, if you've been there, you can see that. You only see some rocks, and when you have high tide, the water goes under the hotel. The pool is, is really important. I understand that the parking situation is very important for almost everybody here, and it is everybody here. But we are self-contained, as I said that last time. We have the parking lot across the street. We're going to put the cars off across the street. When it off, when you don't have any traffic, you know, we don't mind running it at night, because we really, the hotel people don't mind. We can keep some, some cars on the property. We have enough parking. We're totally self-contained, so we really, it's very important to us. It's, it's, it's almost our blood, you know, it's, I don't know how to explain to you, because I've been here for four years trying to get this done, and we almost got it once through, and, and it came back here again. That and the restaurant is urgent to us, you know, it's, it's making us or breaking us. People come in for two nights and leave. They don't stay long enough. We don't have the three, four nights customer, because they have nothing to do. They come in, it's gorgeous, they look at, they open their window, it's beautiful, and then boom, they got nothing to do. They leave. We need them to stay an extra day. That's all we need. We don't really have that, so we feel that the pool can get them to stay an extra day. We're not just here to say, "Please give me a pool because it's going to make my property better." No, it's, it's a necessity for our business. It really is. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I've got another speaker, speaker slip for Daniel Manny.
Tony, if you wanted to donate time, you did it before you spoke, so he can speak, or if somebody else wants to take the time, but-
But I did mention it, actually, that if we needed more time, some of those might yield to me.
Let me, we've got Joshua Gotham, are you going to speak?
You have my time to Tony as well.
What? Okay, and Ron Hirsch. Okay, so Tony, how much time would you need? Because I don't want to go, we're not going to go down-
I don't want to waste a lot of your time. I just really wanted to ask if, if you're willing to have a discussion and consider, with these conditions, the possibility of reconsidering that straw vote. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about. I don't, I'd love to answer any questions you have that would help you in that regard.
Understand, thank you. Okay, that's item 3A1. Let me close the, here, anybody else want to speak? We closed the public hearing. Comments?
A quick question, are we hearing 3A1 and 3B1 at the same time, or are we going to have a separate round for 3B?
Well, we, no, we pulled, this is 3A1.
I'm sorry, 3A1, 3A2.
3A1, we're going, 3A2 comes after that.
And we're going to hear it separately?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the problem is, is this. Technically, anybody who voted in the affirmative can ask for a reconsideration of actions that have been taken under Robert's rules. Problem is that, that we don't operate the way a parliament does. We, we have a public hearing process. It's not fair to the public that they, that they're forced to come down here once to argue on the nature of a project, and then at a later time have the commission decide that, well, well, wait a minute, you know, we're going to reconsider. People shouldn't have to come down here every week to, to monitor what we're doing. So, I, I understand a lot of the points that have been made. I mean, I, I, I agree entirely that the hotel parking standard is, is, you know, requiring two parking places for, for a hotel room implies that it's a hot sheet motel. I mean, the other, people typically come to a hotel together. But these are issues that are beyond our control. We don't have the discretion to be able to, to make these changes, and, and so the, the issue in my mind is still, is this, does this resolution reflect accurately what action the commission took, and in my view, it does, and I would move the adoption of the resolution with the changes that have been proposed by staff, or that one change that has been proposed by staff.
I'll second that with comments.
That's to, that's for both motions, right, to adopt both proposed motions, sorry, both proposed resolutions?
This is 3A1, I think.
Aren't there two resolutions? There are two resolutions for-
There's two resolutions, 3A1, yes.
Yep, so the motion, the motion is to adopt both proposed resolutions with the change proposed by Mr. Malika.
I think that was in 3B, 3A1, 3B.
That was in, the change was to resolution 19-16.
Which is item 3A2?
Which is 3A2.
3A2, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no changes to-
No changes to this one, as far as I know.
3A1.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment.
Second, go ahead.
I'd just like to comment on that. I totally agree with Jeff that we're here only to memorialize what we passed. And I also agree that the public has a right to speak in, speak up. I did get Tony's letter, and when he said, "Well, we have 50% of the parking of the other hotels, or 50% more." You look at that closely, and you figure out that you forgot the hotel. So, sure, you got a lot more parking if you don't have any requirements for the hotel. So, I, I, I just want to move, move what we're supposed to do. Our, our reconsideration should be, as per the code, the planning, the city council, and appeal is available.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Just to put out there, I know we have talked about this one for quite a while. I appreciate how much energy the team has put in, and, you know, just per kind of process and policy, you know, what'll move forward from here. You guys know the next steps. You've been through the cycle before, unfortunately, but I, I don't see that we can do a whole lot more. There's not many language changes to what we have, so, yeah, that's, that's where I stand also.
Okay, Mr. Manny, and I, we met a long time ago. Now, you're still not to get, just, and I, I do understand your position. And, you know, if I were in your shoes, I'd probably be doing the same thing, because it's a business, and you're trying to get it going, but at the moment, we can't change what we voted on last time, so can we get a roll call, Catherine?
And to clarify, this is to adopt resolution 19-18 and 19-19 as proposed by staff?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings? Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. 3A2. Now, Tony, do you want to go on with 3A2?
Well, only if you want to consider the fact that we have enough parking on site, and we don't need Hertz. I mean, we've said all we can say. A straw vote is a straw vote. I just want to, you know, point out that legally, you, you could, if you believed what we're saying, approve it. But I appreciate you've done the best you can, and I guess that's the end of that.
Well, and could we clarify that as far as what our policies are, what have you, for kind of straw vote versus full vote, or what would be?
Well, it, this wasn't a straw vote. What was, what was proposed last time was, the planning commission directed the staff to come back with resolutions that memorialized the decision, the points that were taken. You did do a straw vote on each item as it was going through, to memorialize the decision made by the planning commission. That's brought back here for your approval to make sure that it's accurate. And that's long been the practice of the planning commission, to bring items back like this for verification that there is not any discrepancy, and that staff did follow your direction.
And then the concept of a straw vote, like, in terms of how we, we practice it, it could have been quote-unquote "broken" right in that session before the final vote, if there had been kind of additional conversation.
The straw, the straw vote's just a, a, a device that's used so that you can move through a complicated project and make, and get consensus on different items, where there may be consensus on some parts and not on others.
Thank you.
I have a question before we, before we make a vote. Richard, on, on page six of 10 of the resolution, item 5, it requires them to come in with an as-built plan of the restaurant. But my question is, do you guys review that? I mean, is, can they just draw whatever they feel like? Why doesn't the planning staff draw that? Well, it's there. I mean, if, if you came in with a plan that showed twice as much space as there now-
No, we, we verify what people submit.
Okay, it doesn't say you do in the resolution. It just says turn in a plan.
That's just standard procedure.
Okay. Okay, I-
Okay, I just have one suggested change on that same page, six of 10, item number eight, whether you're going to, you suggest a review, and my only, and I think this may be adequate, but what we did with this resolution is basically allow them to open up the restaurant to people who were not guests of the hotel, right?
It's in here.
Huh?
It's in here.
Right, but I'm just saying, when you come back, it's, it's just talking here about, there's going to be a one-year approval, a review. And just make sure, I mean, I would just add some words to make sure that we're taking a look at the impacts of this opening it up for the non-residents. And if there's an impact with that, we want to sort of focus on that, because that should be the only thing that really should be different. It's just, if you, if that's covered in here, I'm fine, but I just want to make sure that we're really, that's what we changed, so let's make sure we look at that.
You could, you could add maybe a review of the proposed use, including impacts of opening the restaurant to the public?
Yes, that'd be fine, just-
That's what we intended.
Yeah, that's what we want to do, I think. That's the impact, that's what we changed, so let's make sure-
It's one year and a five year.
We're looking at that.
Okay, so I-
One, one more question, just if you don't mind. On John's observation on item 5, I just wanted to get a clarification from Bonnie. So, again, page six of 10, item 5, that last line in there, it says, "In the event the project plans conflict, the conditions shall take precedence." I'm assuming then if they submit their, their paperwork, if you see a problem, you would say, "Hey, this doesn't comply. You got to redraw it, come back in compliance." Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I move we accept-
The only comment I would have on, 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 on your remark is that it's going to be difficult to analyze the impact, because they've been open to the public for the last 10 years.
And there may not be any. I mean, and that's fine.
Well, there, there may be impact, because it was a stealth opening.
It's, we just, as long as we, somebody's going to look, that's all. I'm not, I don't, I don't expect we're going to have a lot of problems, but just, that was what we changed, so I want to make sure we, we set some focus on that. Can I get a motion?
I, I move we accept staff's recommendation with, there weren't any changes, were there?
Yeah, the one change-
Two. So, there's two-
The one change Steve's mentioned.
So, the motion would be adopting resolution 19-16 with the addition to condition number eight. Doing, to add after, after review of the proposed use, including impacts of opening the restaurant to the public, and also condition 26, striking-
Ah, yes.
The second sentence, which says, "Subject to approval of a signed permit, the property owner must install public shoreline access signage," and also striking the typo "in addition" at the end of that paragraph.
Correct.
That's what I meant.
And also to adopt resolution 19-17 as proposed by staff.
Give a second.
Second?
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on. Item 3B1, approval of the minutes. Somebody pulled those?
I did.
I did, just to-
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Small thing I noticed, I already spoke to Kathleen about this, but just on, on my commissioner comment, I had remarked that Europe has actually banned 10 different types of plastic now, not simply is discussing recycling plastics. And that, I think she already has a clear idea of, that I called that out, and how to change it to what, what I actually said.
Do you propose language, Kathleen, to make a change to the minutes?
Yes, he just clarified that about the ban. It wasn't just measures of the European Union.
What pages, what pages are correction?
It's April 1st.
Last meeting.
Meeting, um, page two. It's the last set of minutes.
Okay, Kathleen, you know where that change is?
Top of page two of seven, in the item 2B, it starts with Commissioner Hill as the paragraph, right at the top.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, you want to serve, plastic recycling measures and ban, is that correct, Commissioner Hill?
Commented on the fact that the European, European Union has now banned 10 different types of plastic.
And how this might be applicable to Malibu?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a minor thing, but we might as well, if we see it, we might as well call it out.
So, your motion is to correct the, to adopt the minutes as corrected?
Yes.
Get a second?
I'll second.
Oh, a favor?
Hi.
Aye.
All right, moving along. 3B2?
Okay, I pulled that one.
Okay.
And in reading the staff report, obviously, this is under, below the amount of square footage allowed for non-exempt formula retail. But the calculation of 181 square feet, which counts towards the total in the long run, is massively off-base. If you look at the diagrams, there's, on the first diagram of the two, there's substantial outside seating, which has to count against the 4,800 square feet allowed under a CDP. And if you look at-
John, just before, is that A dot, A1 dot zero, what you're looking at there?
Uh, it doesn't have, oh.
It's got in the lower right corner?
Yeah, A1 dot zero.
Okay.
Bottom right-hand corner.
So, in that lower, that pink section with the cloud around it?
Next to the pink section, there's outside seating.
Got it.
Okay, that, there's a provision in the CDP that counts that. There's a maximum 4,800 square feet. But the real problem is the count of the restaurant, and that is, if you look at the next page, which isn't identified, there's a blue line around the 181 square feet for the restaurant. It does not even count the counter. And the counter is a service counter with a Coke machine and, and all kinds of stuff on it, and a microwave and cooking material. And it doesn't count, which it doesn't even show all of, and, and with a magnifying glass, I got somewhere around fifty seats, uh, inside the restaurant adjacent to this counter. And this, this building is approved for retail formula ordinance exemption as a supermarket or a market. And a market doesn't have a restaurant and a bunch of seats adjacent to it and not count the service area as part of the restaurant. So the hundred and eighty-one appears to be about four times that size, but it's not measured correctly.
So the, the area that's outlined in blue is specific to the, um, the juice bar, Nectar. That's where they will make the juice. Um, I will confirm whether the, um, the bar that you mentioned that's adjacent to the blue line that is outside of the blue box, whether that is specific to Nectar or whether it's part of the overall, um, food service that's within the restaurant. If you flip over the page, um, on the backside of that, you'll see, uh, a pink cloud, kind of clouded in, in the corner. That just shows what, where in the greater context of the grocery store that little blue box area is. And what you can see is that there's a whole lot of seating there, but that also serves the other prepared food areas. It's not specific to the juice bar. That's why it's not counted as service area.
Prepared food eaten on-site is a restaurant, okay? It's not a supermarket. Now, a deli, deli counters are takeout. And prepared food eaten on-site is a restaurant, by definition.
Well, it's not how we treat any of the seating that's in Ralph's today or any of the other...
There is no seating in Ralph's. There's outside seating at Ralph's.
No, there's inside seating in Ralph's. There's a counter and some, and some seats.
At Ralph's?
Yeah, there is.
Yes.
Well, that, that may be, but there's no, where is the deli counter here? It's not adjacent to this. It's not even close to this. I mean, this is a restaurant.
It's not a, it's not a restaurant.
It's got outside seating adjacent to it on both sides.
It's not a restaurant. This is just an outdoor seating area that's open to the entire shopping center, the part that's outside, and inside there's prepared foods like in many Whole Foods. And so if you've been to, to other Whole Foods, like the one that's in my neighborhood, has lots of prepared foods, you know, salad bar, Indian sushi, whatever. And then all in one area, there's a, a, a group of seats that you can sit at. It's not a restaurant.
What, what differentiates a juice bar from a deli counter?
It serves juice and not...
And not deli.
It's not, it, in this particular case, this is a formula retail business that's located within an exempt grocery store.
I understand that, but there's a limit. Is, is it an exempt grocery store?
Yes.
Why?
Because it's a grocery store. And grocery stores are today brought, we don't have, this, this grocery store fits the definitions of grocery stores.
What do you want to do with this, John?
Can I, can I ask a clarification?
There's nothing to do.
It's a, it's a receive and file, and I...
Well, it's a, no, here's what I want to do. I want to make sure when you come back for more square footage for a restaurant, it's counted properly. This is a cumulative number. They're allowed a certain amount of square feet for exempt. And non-exempt. And if this number is understated, then the next one that comes down the line is, is overstated.
I understand the concern, and I am going to double-check what the nature of the counter that's outside of the blue box is to make sure that we've got the square footage calculated properly because I, I'm having trouble reading this plan, same as you. But, um, the service area is specific to, that counts towards formula retail is specific to the Nectar juice bar portion only. I just want to be clear about that because the grocery store, the rest of the grocery store is exempt.
And to clarify, sort of what we're doing on this process here is, this is a ministerial decision, so there's no discretion in what's going on here. And what Bonnie has done is reported her analysis, and if you see errors in how it's done, to bring it to her attention, if she determines there is an error in how it's ministerially done, she'll revoke it and make a correction, but it's a ministerial permit, so...
And then, and then if it's revoked and corrected, if she decides that actually the counter where you hand the people the juice is part of the juice bar, even though it's called a bar, uh, then she'll come back and say, "No, it was two sixty instead of one eighty," or something like that?
Yeah, we would update the formula retail clearance and, um, re-report it.
Okay.
Excellent.
Can I just comment? I, I would agree with John that the seating should be included, and at minimum, you would apportion it based on if there are other food-serving places sharing the same seating. It would take a prorated share at minimum. And I guess the basic question here is whether including that square footage gets you past the requirements of the clearance anyway or not, or whether this is all just an academic discussion, you know?
Well, today it's an academic discussion, but the next restaurant it won't be.
Okay, let Bonnie take a look.
It's an academic discussion in the sense that Bonnie is the one who decides this. Your opinions are nice and they're, you know, as if the, the opinions of anybody sitting out there would be, have as much weight as, as the opinions of, of this commission. This is not within our jurisdiction.
It is within our jurisdiction if we exceed the CDP.
Gentlemen, okay, we've, we've got it resolved. Bonnie's going to take a look. If, if she's wrong, she'll get back to us with an answer.
Can I just get a clarification? That, that, there's a section D that waiver by planning commission that we do have, uh, jurisdiction to impose conditions on a waiver, but there's no waiver here. So we have discretion in one direction, but not the other?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not ready to move on. Sorry, Steve. Um, I just want to understand. So I'm looking at this, and again, it's not the best plan, but just looking at kind of that lower section of the store, we got, the, the Whole Foods, got a bunch of check stands, John observes that area kind of to our left by the pink cloud. That's got a bunch of seating where John eyeballs added about fifty seats inside, some more seats outside. I guess what comes to mind for me is that obviously a juice bar, okay, they're preparing juices, blenders, whatever, pretty simple. If we start to get, you know, what if that change, what if that were preparing burgers or something? Would, when would it turn the corner into being a restaurant in that corner? Do we have any clarification on that, or is that going to be kind of judgment called by Whole Foods? You know, I, I can see where this, you know, and I know how that Whole Foods experience goes. At some point, this could start to look like a restaurant. This is academic, but just to kind of understand what would be, what, what would be, um, how would things play out? Like what are scenarios in terms of where we would be kind of brought in versus where it'd be the discretion of either applicant or yourself?
Well, um, it's, we'll have to look at whatever comes before it.
And I don't, I don't think we should go travel too far down hypotheticals. Um, you know, this is, you know, the definition of, of grocery store seems to be evolving.
Right.
And, and so it's going to be, uh, an analysis of the facts on the ground. I mean, it could be a different analysis here if this was a Whole Foods juice bar versus a Nectar juice bar. So, um...
I just want to be aware. I'm not trying to be problematic. I just want to, like, to John's point, I just want to get what that, what the processes would be, so as long as it keeps coming back up and, you know.
I wonder if there's a determination about a formula retail clearance. Bonnie will report it here.
Okay.
Okay, received and filed.
Correct.
All right, moving along. Item three B three. You pulled that? Somebody pulled that?
Uh, I pulled it, I guess. Um, I would like to make this a CDP hearing. I, I went out and, and I know we can't discuss a lot of this, but I went out and found quite a few questions when I toured the property, mainly to do with culverts that aren't on the map, which should apparently have easements, um, trail, trail access. I have a fair amount of questions, and I, I can't get all the answers by looking at this staff report.
Okay, any disclosures?
Um, yeah. I visited the site. Um, I determined that there are some drainage, um, devices, culverts, drain pipes, that, that aren't documented, aren't, aren't as characterized in the report. There may be potential view impacts. Not sure about that. But I, I do have a number of concerns about this, and my suggestion would be to, to continue it based on our...
Just disclosures before they, if they just open the public hearing, then you can, after that, then make deliberations about a motion.
Okay, well, I visited it today, walked it.
None?
No disclosures.
Is there, are there, I don't have any speaker slips.
If anyone wants to speak?
Anybody like to speak?
Is the applicant here? Um, if you'll fill out a speaker slip after you're done?
Just give us your name, please.
Steve Cant. I'm the architect and the applicant. Um, if there's a question about culvert not being on the plans, I'd like to address that. I, I think everything's depicted on the plans.
That's not my specific question.
Well, my question, Trevor, is we're not supposed to be hearing this, right? Or is, decide whether we're going to...
We're not opening up a discussion of the, of the merits of the case. If you had a brief question about if something was inaccurate about the map, if you could correct it here and that would ease your...
If we're, and that would help with moving tonight.
If your decision about whether, whether you need more information, you can come back as a full hearing.
Let me ask a question, guys. Commissioner's choice, do you want to bring this back as a CDP or do you want to...
I do.
I do.
Okay, you get a motion?
I move we bring it back as a CDP.
The public hearing hasn't been closed, so if you want to, let me give you an opportunity to speak.
If you, yeah, if you'd like to say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get you up here and not give you a chance to say something. So I, I think there are a number, what it sounds like up here, the votes, there are a number of questions people have about the project. I'm not saying any of them are going to be showstoppers, but I think they, you know, typically like to get answers and make sure they understand what's going on. So I think you're going to, I mean, I can't tell you how they're going to vote, but it appears they're going to vote to bring it back so we have a full hearing on the House.
Okay. It's just everything I've heard so far has been addressed in the staff report, and it is all in the plans.
Well, then, should be a quick meeting when you, if we come back.
Did you, did you want to say anything else before they close the public hearing?
I just wish there was an opportunity to address it now because I think it's, uh, it's all been covered. If, if there are any questions, I'd, I'd love to have the opportunity to answer these questions.
It would actually be helpful for staff if we knew what the, what the concerns are so that we can make sure that we cover it.
Okay, you want to go?
Well, you got to close the hearing.
Can we close the public hearing? And we'll get the questions? Okay, you got to fill out a slip also, please. All right, if you guys got questions, let's hear them.
Well, these are very brief because once I, I went through it once and then looked at it, I couldn't figure out a bunch of stuff. Uh, one of the questions would be, uh, what is the front wall? And is the, the Sea Star Estates have a permit for that wall? And is it over forty-two inches? Second question would be, uh, what's the status of the trail and the driveway that crosses the trail? The third one would be, where does the drainage go? Uh, there's a, there's a drainage channel. It's running today, a week after it rained, and it's got pussy willows or something in it, so it might be riparian habitat. Who knows? Because it's all, it's all burnt out up above it. Let's see here. And the real big question is, the real big question in my mind is, where does the drain go? It doesn't appear to go across the street. It appears to head towards Trancas, but you can't see through it, so there's no way to know. And it's a large drainage channel. That's my questions.
Craig?
Yeah. I'll get back to the drainage in a second. My first threshold question is more just for staff of, why is this an A CDP? It has a site plan review for a twenty-four-foot roof. Why doesn't that just come to us automatically?
Because, um, the planning director has the authority to approve, um, site plan reviews if it's in the context of an administrative CDP.
Okay.
What has to come to you is a variance, but for a minor modification or a site plan review, that's something that can be approved administratively.
Okay. Um, yeah, on the drainage, it looks like the, where the guest house is and where the beginning of the, uh, road to the, the whole Sea Star Estates has been filled over what was a historic water course that came down that gully and has now been channeled into more of a municipal-style drainage system with the drains in the curbs. My concern is that that probably works most all the time, but for the hundred-year storm where you get that quick gully washer with all the debris building up, you might be getting the guest house washing away, as, as happened similarly in the Ramiras in this last situation with their bridge and as in Big Rock in, uh, nineteen ninety-four, after the fire in ninety-three, the mud was up to people's shoulders walk, trying to walk through that. And that you get that, you know, hundred-year thing and that guest house is gone. So I would like to see more geotechnical done on how that drainage works. There's a concern, a question too about, is there an easement for that drainage?
There is, and it's, um, owned by the county flood control district, if I'm not mistaken. So that's, um, entirely their jurisdiction.
Okay. Moving, uh, and I did observe water in the culvert weeks after it's rained, and it, it appears to have been cleaned out since the big storm, so it was hard to gauge how quickly it might or might not, um, fill up with debris. Moving on, it, I started to look at the math on the square footage, and I found some spaces, and I don't remember which now, that were measured on as internal square floor area, square footage. And if we're talking about TDSF, then we should be talking about the, the whole structure area. And I didn't bother to continue on measure, trying to measure every last little thing, but I suspect that if you measured the areas based on the exterior measurements, the TDSF might be over. And so I'd want to have that checked.
Can you confirm that, Steve? If the square footage measurements for the house go all the way to the exterior walls or if it's just to the interior?
Yes, it goes to all the exterior walls. I was put through the wringer for, uh, a few go-arounds on that.
Yeah.
Double-checked and triple-checked.
I wish I remembered what, this was now more, more than a week ago when I first looked at that and I said, "Oh, that doesn't add up." So, uh, maybe that was just one room that I happened to notice or something.
There's even some exterior planters that are included as interior living area.
Okay.
Even though they're open to the outdoors and they're planters.
Um, it looks like it potentially might block primary view from the house next door. There, I didn't see any discussion about that, so I don't know how we would treat that.
Um, well, story poles were installed on the property and notice was given to all the property owners by mail and in the newspaper, and no one has contacted us about a primary view concern, and that's, you know...
That's it then, okay. Um, and has the HOA approved it as the applicant states? Do we, do we have, do we care?
None of our business.
Okay.
Uh, there was a letter of approval by the HOA, and they love the project. And they're the ones that would be impacted by the view.
Um, and then on the, the, the second driveway, that raises issues that are sort of analogous to the recent, um, Sea Ranch application where we had a guest house with a, its own separate entrance.
I think that driveway, um, oh, okay, I see. Yeah, there's two. Well, there's one driveway there right now that, um, is where the trail easement, um, connects with Morning View Drive. And the, I believe that driveway also serves the flood, as access to the flood control easement. But then, yes, there is a secondary driveway that would serve just the, um, second unit.
And I would have questions about its legal status in, with regard to, for example, would you be adding a second address as you proposed might be possible on the Birdview? And/or would this be problematic in adding a second access to the Seaview Estates?
Access as far as Seaview Estates goes, or Sea Star Estates is not, it's not a zoning code issue for us. If the HOA has an issue with that, it, they probably would have mentioned it in their review and approval of it. And as far as addressing goes, that's, um, not a zoning code issue either.
Okay. Um, and is there any issue with calling a, a, what appears to be a garage, a studio? There's a car parked in it. So what, what's the difference between a garage and a studio in terms of any oversight we'd have?
Trevor, should we be getting answers or should we be getting...
Well, I mean, my purpose in answering, my purpose in answering questions is if it gets you over the hump of having a comfort level with this. If, if it doesn't, it also would help us as far as, you know...
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck on the, the, the engineering and the swale and the, I, I want to see more on that regardless. So my vote would be to continue, but...
Any chance I could answer those concerns?
The, well, I mean...
They've all been addressed, and I'd love the opportunity to show you how they were addressed in the report.
We shouldn't be holding it here.
I think we want to take a vote and see who we want to go.
It's, yeah, it's, it's your discretion if you, if you, um, as the chair, if you want to give him an opportunity to address some of these, if you think it's going to answer, um...
Can I clarify on that question?
Here's my, wait, hang, here's my take. I think there is an interest and enough questions to bring it back, all right? I mean, I just, we can, we can do this all night long, and I think we're going to end up with a vote at the end that says, "Bring it back." Uh, and I don't want to waste your time. And like I said, if you've got all the answers, if these questions are all answered, it should make the subsequent hearing relatively easy, so...
So I will move that we recommend we bring it back as a CDP.
And can I clarify what we're looking for? Because he's said that it's been addressed, and we have a note from a biologist saying it's not a stream. I don't believe that that's the exact expertise that we need. It may not be in a biological sense, but I don't see any sort of engineer or hydrology kind of report that addresses that. Okay? All right.
It was. This is... There's just a few. From what I understand, there's just one or two questions, and it's all been eminently made clear in the staff report. Unfortunately, I've, like I said, I've been put through the wringer on all this stuff already. And the whole purpose of that was so that every T would be crossed, every I would be dotted so that we wouldn't be continuing in this today, so...
Let me do this. Let me close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners, see what their choice is, and that way we all know where we're going, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, what do you want to do?
I move that we bring it back as a CDP.
Yeah, I second with an observation. I mean, just looking at the neighborhood character findings, I think this is one of the projects which is going to be at the high end of what we've considered. So I just want to make that as an observation, but I do move John's motion.
That's a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm not going to support it because I haven't heard any concerns raised that relate to the findings that we have to make as planning commissioners. We're not hydrologists, we're not soils engineers. Those decisions are made by somebody who actually gets paid for this job. So I'm not going to support the motion.
Fair enough. I just want to call out that the neighborhood character is something we are to find, so I did want to... That's why I wanted to point that one out.
Okay, thank you. We get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings? Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all very much. Let's move on to the last item tonight, which is item 5A, the 28848 Cliffside Drive. Variance number 19010, permit number 17101, demolition permit number 19015, application for demolition of existing residence and the construction of a new single-family residence and accessory development. Richard, you're on, I think. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. And the project you have before you this evening is the demolition of an existing single-family home and the construction of a new single-family home on that lot. The property is located on the ocean side of Cliffside Drive. It is the eastern end of Cliffside Drive near the turnaround at the end of the road. The application proposes a new single-family residence that's two stories in height with a basement and subterranean garage, two detached accessory structures, a spa and a pool. There will be ornamental ponds. The applicant is proposing an in-ground fire pit and seating area. There is also a trash enclosure at the front of the property next to the front yard fencing and gates that are proposed, a new wastewater treatment system, and the project does include the required 20% view corridor because it is a property that while Cliffside Drive is not a designated scenic road in the local land use plan for the LCP, the local implementation plan does document it as a road that provides ocean views. And so therefore, the applicant is complying with that by providing the required view corridor. There are two discretionary requests associated with the project. One is a variance to allow the height of the garage inside to exceed 12 feet. Basements and subterranean garages under our code are limited to a maximum ceiling height of 12 feet. The applicant's intention here is not to add a second floor, but rather to add a two-car lift in two of the three garage spaces. And this will allow five cars to park underground rather than three. There is also a request for a site plan review to allow for construction of a pitched roof above 18 feet, up to 28 feet, and that's for the main residence. Staff is recommending that if you do approve the project this evening, we were unable to make the hardship findings for why the garage should exceed above 12 feet, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance and approval of the project with a modified garage. This is a site plan showing the property. On the left of the screen is Cliffside Drive. That would be the north. The south is shown on the right-hand side, and that is the bluff. The hatched area you see on the right-hand side, that is the 50-foot setback. The LIP allows for the 100-foot bluff top setback, is a setback from top of bluff, to be reduced from 100 to 50 feet if the geotechnical reports demonstrate that over the life of the project, it won't be... It will not suffer from any stability issues, or it's expected that the bluff will retreat back that far. The applicant was able to demonstrate that through their geotechnical reports, and the city geologists felt that a 50-foot setback was applicable to this project and consistent with the city's codes as well as the coastal program. The dark gray, almost black area that you see highlighted towards the top of the site plan there, that is the proposed view corridor. It will be on the eastern side of the property. The applicant understands that the fencing in that area needs to be visually permeable, and that's where the driveway slopes down to go into the subterranean garage, and the retaining walls also are below the height of the street. So if one were to stand on the street, you would have a clear view looking towards the horizon there. This is an elevation of the home from the street side. As you can see, it is a two-story home. The applicant has stacked the development so that towards the front are those two detached accessory structures with a pond and an attached wall. That wall is not a freestanding wall, so it is part of the structure, and it meets the code's requirements. This is a bluff top elevation, so this would be the rear of the home where it would be easy to see if it's a two-story home. However, because of the change in topography from the beach down at the toe of the slope to the bluff top, this elevation, unless you're in a boat, is going to be hidden from view. This is a side elevation. This particular one is the east side elevation of the main residence, where you can see the garage doors. And the door that you see there on the right-hand side is not a door into the basement. That is a mechanical crawl space area. It's not part of the basement. It's strictly a room for mechanical equipment and does not offer basement access. Any access to the basement is behind a wall so that this does comply with the opening allowable for a subterranean garage. This is a section through the subterranean garage. And what you can see there is, on the right-hand side of the screen, is the proposed pit that the applicant has requested the variance for. Now, while this will not change the visual characteristics of the home, it essentially is just an issue with the height that the code require or allows for a basement or subterranean garage, and it most results in additional excavation. This is a close-up of what the applicant is requesting. What you would end up with is roughly a ceiling height, I believe around 18 feet, because you would have the... If you were to measure that from the bottom of the pit, which has about a two-foot, one-inch retreat space and mechanical space, that's for the mechanism that lifts the car up, and then you have a six-foot, eight-inch area for the car that'll be in the pit, and then you have the actual level of the garage that you drive into. This is just the subterranean portion of the project. You have the basement towards the bottom of the screen, and you can see the three car spaces that are proposed. So once again, if the variance is denied, the project will still comply with the city's parking requirements. The applicant is able to provide the two enclosed spaces. He will end up with three enclosed spaces and then have the two unenclosed parking spaces. These are some elevations showing what the proposed residence will look like. The upper elevation would be if you were to, say, stand on the very edge of the bluff and look back towards the home. And the elevation below that is of the two proposed accessory structures. This would be if you had your back to the front of the house, looking towards the street. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution, which would approve the coastal development permit, and in staff's recommendation, that would result in the denial of the variance if the planning commission chooses to. Thank you. I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant.
Richard, thank you very much. Disclosures.
Conversation with Norm Haney last week, in which we discussed his approach to the subterranean lift process. Well, there was something different. It wasn't in the staff report. It was the theory of how it really wasn't exceeding the requirements because of the way the floor is moving up and down, but...
Commissioner Hill?
I visited the site with Commissioner Marks. I also spoke with Chester King, archaeologist, and the applicant's archaeologist, Brandon Lewis, and learned something about prehistoric Chumash habitation in the area.
Commissioner Mazza?
I also... I talked to Norm today about his letter that we received, I guess, today, and didn't learn anything that wasn't in his letter. I also viewed the property while it was in escrow about a year, year and a half ago.
Commissioner Marks?
I visited the property with Commissioner Hill, and the applicant team did talk a little bit with Norm also about that height of the second level in the garage. Nothing new there beyond what's in the staff report. I will say, just on site visit, I got a better sense of that view corridor, kind of, I guess, to the north of the property. And yeah, it's good to see that opened up. I just want to make that observation. It wasn't as clear on the plans as seen in person.
I also... Norm was gracious enough to give me a call, basically covering the same material he talked to the Commissioner Jennings mentioned. And prior to the house being sold, I did not do a site visit now, but prior to the house being sold, I had a chance to go through it. It was owned by a gentleman who was an agent. And the house at that point in time was pretty much left the way it was. We had the pictures of all the... Got nothing to do with the vote, but it was just one held in experience. Okay, with that, get some speaker slips. Norm, you're up first. Oh, open the public hearing.
Good evening, planning commissioners. First, let me, and Chair Euring, let me ask, first of all, is there any opposition? Anybody noticed for opposition?
Opposition to speaker slips, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I've got your speaker, there's a Kirby... You live next across the street?
Yes.
Okay, that's... And then there's Charles Santos.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess the only speakers we got.
Okay. So I guess there's no reason to reserve time for a rebuttal, unless I can rebut the planning commission. All right. So I want to start off by thanking the staff. I thank senior planner, Richard Malika, is just an incredible planner, and I want to thank him for all the work that he put in to prepare the staff report under the tutelage of Director Bonnie Blue, which we really appreciate. I don't know if you know it, but I'm sure you do. The planning department puts in tremendous amounts of time. And I want to thank you all for your service to the city. I think that Richard made a very good presentation, and I'm not going to go through a whole lot of the same thing that he just went through. We obviously have the geology department's approval, the coastal commissions, or the coastal engineering approval, the health department's approval, public works approval, biology approval, the water department's approval, and of course, the Los Angeles County Fire Department approval, both pedestrian access as well as vehicular access and turnaround. So I'm going to... I mean, we don't block any primary views by the residents. The project is basically located in roughly the same footprint as the existing house. We meet the setback requirements, all of the setback requirements that the city requires. So I'm going to move to the main issue. If there's questions about other issues, feel free to raise them. I'd be happy to answer them. Main issue is this vault that contains two cars. Now, it seems to me, the understanding... There's two things I'll bring up. Number one, I don't think it should be considered as part of the basement, and I'll explain why. Number two, I think there is justification for a hardship, which was not raised by the architect or the people that originally responded to this. That was before I was brought on board. So why shouldn't it be considered part of the basement? Well, a basement's accessible. This vault is not accessible, ever. When it's down, there's a floor above, and you can't get to it. There's no door, there's no stairway, there's only a hatch door with a ladder. And that's in the event that somehow somebody fell asleep in the back seat, and they found themselves in a dark area. So there's one light and a stairway so that they can escape. Other than that, this vault is not accessible. You say, but what happens when the cars are gone out of the standard basement and it raises up? Still, the pit is not accessible. There's a floor. You can't get to it. So I think that basements in general need to be accessible. And I... We just talked about a mechanical vault. It's not accessible. I mean, it is accessible, but it's for mechanical purposes. This is for storage purposes. And the vault is accessible. I mean, the mechanical vault is accessible. This is not accessible. So that's my argument, and it shouldn't be considered as part of the height. Second, the whole purpose for a 12-foot-high limitation is because there had to be some type of limitation, or somebody would come back with a basement that's 20 feet deep. And then they may want to put in a floor in between, and both the upper floor and the lower floor are accessible. So the question was, what's a reasonable height that will allow an in-house theater, a paint studio, woodworking shop? And the answer was 12 feet. They weren't considering this. You're not going to see many of these in the future because they cost an arm and a leg, and most people can park cars on the street, which brings me to the second reason. There is a hardship here. On Cliffside Drive, you cannot park on the street. It's posted, no parking. So let's say that you invite some friends over for Thanksgiving dinner, maybe your relatives. Where are they going to park? They can't park on the street. There's not enough parking on-site. So I went to the Malibu Strong concert, and it's on Cliffside. There's no parking on the street. So all the people had to park at the elementary school parking lot, and they were bussed in... John, you were there. They were bussed into the site. And that's reasonable for a concert, but is it reasonable for your relatives to park off-site and have somebody go pick you up? So I believe that the fact that there is no parking on the street, all the parking has to be on-site, and that creates a tremendous limitation. 90% plus streets where people gain access to their house, you can park on the street. You can't do that here. Those are my comments, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have. And I believe this is a good project. One last thing, the intent. What is the intent of a basement? Well, it's you don't see it. And you don't create a use out of it that would allow for habitation, either a paint studio, a theater, a man cave, whatever. That's not what this is. You can't even get to it. Anyway, you can't get to it. If the lift is up, you can't get to it. If the lift is down, you can't get to it. So those are my comments, and I'll look forward to... So those are my comments, and I'll look forward to your questions if you have any. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Norm. How much time, just in case?
Eight minutes, 39 seconds.
So in case you get some argument against it, you can. I got two more speakers. Kirby, do you want to say anything?
Good evening, Commissioners Jeff, Craig, John, Steve, and Chris. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I want to just emphasize by saying I have lived in Malibu for 58 years, I've lived across the street for 40 of those years. I had the good fortune of spending a lot of time on this property. My godfather, Stan Kamen, used to own that property, he was the top agent for all the Hollywood bigwigs. I told you, Chris and Craig, the night we met you guys out there. It's a magical property. And Richard Landry's team has done an amazing job creating this house, which still being built brand-new will mirror the same feeling when we're in that pool in the future, to be able to remember the days of swimming there as kids. We didn't know when we were swimming that the guys next door were sitting there watching, were John Wayne and Steve McQueen and all those guys, we just were little kids swimming, and it was just a fun place to hang out. But it's an amazing project, and I'm really happy for Chris, this is his dream home. Chris is expanding the family, and congratulations, Chris, he has a brand-new son coming in September, and Patricia has a brand-new grandson. So it's going to be a great place to start a new beginning there. Richard, I want to thank you for all the hard work you've put into this project, I've watched it progress, we've had meetings, and I've just seen the whole thing. You worked on my house 12 years ago, and it was amazing then, and you did a great job, and it's only gotten better. So I just want to say thank you, I'm totally in favor of the project, spoke to a lot of neighbors, they're all for it, and I'm hoping that the car lift is something you guys will look at as a real common sense kind of thing. The parking is a big issue, it's not that there's no parking signs there, it's, they enforce it all the time, and people get tickets there all the time, and you can't change it once it's done. And Chris does have a lot of family and a lot of visitors, and it's just a way to keep a lot of those cars hidden and out of the way. So I am in favor, and I appreciate you guys' time, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. There was one additional speaker slip for Carl, or Charles, do you want to speak, or you? Okay, anybody else like to have any comments on this project? If not, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back up to the table, commissioners, it's yours. Let's go first.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Richard, can you show me the, I think it was slide five that shows the elevation of the garage? Well, I think it was an elevation, I'm not sure. Is that the elevation, or is that a cross-section? I'm wondering what the windows on the left are.
The left of the garage door?
Yeah.
Those open up, they can explain a bit better, but there's a space, there's a parking space behind that, so that's the entrance into it.
So you drive past that into the garage? What I'm wondering is, we have, you know, basements aren't supposed to daylight other than the garage door, and that appears to have something.
If that area would be the garage, it's almost like a second garage in a way, it's the stall that you see there on the right-hand side, that's, those doors slide out of the way, and would then give access to that parking space that you see there to the right-hand side, that's a bit shorter, it's the third space.
So it's a garage door?
It is a garage, it's just a different-looking garage door.
Does it exceed the 18 feet allowed for subterranean garages?
No, that does not, that area where it exceeds the 12 feet is.
No, I'm talking lateral feet.
No, that'll, the maximum width that they end up with, I want to say is around 36 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
But I thought the limit on garage, on subterranean garages was 18 feet plus two columns.
You're allowed to have upwards of three doors, and the code section, we can get it for you, but it does allow for, I want to say it's 36 feet.
Okay, I'd like to see that. Now, so when you drive down, there is, the only exposure is the garage door?
The garage door and the allowable column width between.
And that includes that, those, what look like windows?
Yes, what looks like windows is a sliding garage door to give access to that space.
Okay, so you say it's 36 feet. Okay, now.
Commissioner Mazza, yeah, it says a subterranean garage shall be allowed only one opening for vehicular access and vehicular ingress and egress with a maximum continuous width of 36 feet, not including up to two support columns, not exceeding 18 inches in width.
So that qualifies?
Yeah.
Is it two, is it two different doors? Is it two different garages?
It is open in between, as you can see there, but it is two separate doors, and there's that separate, there's a column there in the middle breaking them up.
Okay, and that's 18 inches. Okay, now my, I go right to the, the only, well, there's several problems. Is the, is the fence that's there now going to remain? So the view corridor is only open by a see-through gate?
Actually, can you bring up slide six, that shows the front, I had the similar question. That view, when we visited the site, the fence kind of to the right half of the property was about six feet or so, I believe. And there were some questions when we visited, what would be the height of the remaining wall? So it kind of echoes John's question, is it going to be?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a 42-inch fence there or a six-foot remaining?
So on sheet A-6.0, which is on, in the same, it's on this slide number six, what you're seeing there is a proposed fence. So as you, and it's probably a bit easier to see on your 11-by-17s, so what you have is a 42-inch-high solid wall. But then, where the driveway gate is, which is the proposed view corridor, you have a six-foot wrought iron visually permeable fence. So the wall that's there now is going to be removed, and you're going to end up with this proposed fence, and this design will carry over into the trash enclosure area, so that the area where they're going to be putting their trash cans is not a six-foot-high solid wall, because it's in the front yard.
Now, to the right of those two double lines, is that the same fence with the 42 inches with the wrought iron above it?
What we're getting, what we're getting into there is, what they're trying to show you is how the property widens out, it's like a, almost like a piece of pie. And so what they've done is they've tried to flatten it. So actually, the end of the fence is the end of their front property line, and what you're seeing is if, say, there was no neighboring property and you were able to see straight down. So the part, all fencing on the front property line that belongs to Mr. Cortazzo, that's going to comply with the code. Now, what's beyond that first solid line, you may not be able to see because of the neighbor's front yard fence.
Okay, but what I'm asking, let me see if I can get it straight, right there, is that a six-foot fence or a four-foot, 42 inches?
That's 42 inches.
Okay, so this, and what about this?
That will be the same, that's the trash enclosure area?
Right, so that trash enclosure is 42 inches.
Correct, they can't do a six-foot-high fence, they understand.
And then they're precluded, all the neighbors, of course, you drive down Cliffside and it's.
It's a wall.
A cave, I'll put it, they're precluded from doing, doing the cave routine, right?
Correct, what's going to be approved is this particular fence, and that'll be.
And no 16-foot ficus.
They will need another permit to do something like that.
Okay, now, then my only other subject, my only other problem, I think it's a great house, is the basement. Now, today on the news, down at Long Beach, a container blew up containing cars, because they had gas in them, and it spontaneously combusted. That's one reason why I have questions on the second floor that, quote, "you can't get into." If you can't get into it, then what do you do when the car blows up? So there's a safety issue in my mind, but the, I went through a million hearings on basements and interpretations and everything else. And as far as I'm concerned, there's two floors in that hole in the ground. So I have a problem with that, and I also agree with staff that it doesn't say 16, 12 feet unless you want to put a car underneath it. It just says 12 feet max, it doesn't give any leeway. And in my case, hardship, a lot of Point Dune doesn't have street parking. And this is going to have three. How many, how many cars can be parked in the front driveway? Are we, we're being told that they're going to have 20 cars or something like this, and it's a hardship?
The applicant is showing two cars in the, in the front driveway there, just outside of the fire department turnaround.
So they'd have five cars?
They're, this, with the lifts, they would end up with seven cars, and without the lifts, they're looking at five cars.
Okay, is there any other house on the street that has a five-car garage?
Not to staff's knowledge.
Okay, so I, it's going to be, I think, impossible for me to find a hardship. And also, I'm wondering why staff, I assume since you don't want a variance for two floors, you're agreeing with the fact that that isn't a floor? Or is that just something we left out of the staff report? It's to deny it because it's over 12 feet, I'm just wondering why there's a recommendation to deny because it's got two floors?
Our recommendation is to deny it because it's, it's one vaulted space that's 12 feet instead of, or more than 12 feet. We didn't, we didn't consider the platform moving up and down to be a separate floor.
Okay, I would, okay, I'll leave it to somebody else.
And I'll renew my comment that I've made several times in the past, that I request that when there's a particular language of a particular provision of the LIP that, on which the decision turns, that the language actually be quoted in the staff report rather than referred to. And in this particular case, it was referred to as section 13.6, that's wrong, it's actually section 3.6. But quoting the language itself would be a help to speed up our review process. That's the only, the only comment I have with regard to the staff report. As far as the, the site plan review, I don't see any reason not to approve it. As far as the variance is concerned, the argument that Norm makes is really not a variance argument, it's an argument that it really shouldn't be considered a basement. It's not an argument for a variance from the language of the code. And as ingenious as that is, in this particular case, the language of the LIP is just inescapable. It's very clear that a subterranean garage cannot have a ceiling above 12 feet. And trying to make the variance findings in this particular case is just a bridge too far for me, I can't, I can't do it. The, if this variance meets the standard imposed by the code, then anytime anybody wanted to build a basement with a ceiling larger than 12 feet, they could do it. It's just, it just reaches too far. So I can't support the variance, but I can support the site plan review and the remainder of the findings that have to be made.
Commissioner Hill?
Well, I just, still open for comment, I'd like to make the motion that Jeff is alluding to. We approve staff's recommendation, approving the project with denying a variance number 19010.
That's to adopt resolution 19.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Can I clarify, that was to adopt resolution 19-34 as proposed by staff?
Yes. And deny.
That includes the denied variance 19010.
Okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just have, I have some questions pertaining to the front slope and the geological integrity. Saw sort of late that the rendering that they show of the cliffside shows that the front embankment, and maybe this is just the rendering to make it look sexy, but the embankment looks to have been graded down from its current sort of right angular shape to something much more gradual, putting the fence back further in the top of the bluff, much closer to the house, within the 50-foot range. So this, as drawn, this is less than 50 feet. It is just a rendering, so maybe that carries no weight, but that points me to a more technical question about the geological integrity of the whole area. And for example, what sort of drainage issues might we have in that basement? Even, you know, one-story of basement, where does that drainage go? Do they have a pump system that lifts out when that driveway fills up with a flash flood of rainwater, where does that water go?
Hey, a quick favor, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah.
Just in terms of this illustration, are you talking kind of the uppermost right corner where the two hash sections meet, where your concern is right near there, just to the kind of left of that in the picture?
Are you asking about my comment about the gradual slope, or now about the?
The first question about the grading change.
All across the front of it.
Which front, I just want to.
The cliff, the cliffside.
All the checkered area.
All the checkered area.
The back.
Oh, so in that rendering, you're saying that's where they show?
They've shown it to be sort of sloped down, so the actual bluff top appears to be much closer to the house than the 50 feet on the actual plan.
Okay, okay.
That may just be a rendering thing.
Yeah, the rendering doesn't control anything in terms of approval, it's just to help visualize the architecture.
But so we're on the question now about flood and where that drainage goes, because it seems to me you'd have to either have some elaborate pumping system to get water out of that garage bay area, or you'd be piping it down through the cliffside, through, under, under the front yard, I don't know where that water would go.
Well, let me make a comment on that, because I've lived there for 30-something years, and I've walked it 40-something years, and I've probably walked it as much as Kirby. The major variable on that section of Point Dune, as far as the cliff front goes, is how much water. Four houses down, the guest house is within three feet of the edge, because they way overwatered. And if people overwater, they get slides, it's just that part of the point is that way.
Okay, Skavik, you have a question, can anybody get an answer to Mr. Hill's?
I will, yes, indeed. Every time that you have a driveway that goes down to a garage, you have a grate across that driveway, and the water drops into that. There is a sump pump that pumps that water back up, and in this case, it's pumping it back to the street. And there's a drainage course, drains in the street that takes care of the water, it doesn't go over the edge and, and, you know, down to the beach below.
Thank you, Richard, have you looked at, and you've determined that that pumping technology design is adequate to cover a 100-year flood kind of situation?
Our public works department, they did that, yes.
Okay, I hadn't seen that, so. And then my other concern has to do with the archaeology, I spoke to both Chester King and to the applicant's archaeologist, Brandon Lewis, and they both agreed that, that a monitor would be called for in this situation. Given that the existing house doesn't go as deep as the current house, the proposed house would go, and given the likelihood of Chumash, prehistoric Chumash traces in this, in this location. likelihood of Chumash, prehistoric Chumash traces in this, in this location, and particularly suggesting that the, there is a, typically, you do research at an archaeological information center, and there are sensitivity maps about where these places are designed, but they thought that the existing house is old enough that it would, the, the information on file would not necessarily be accurate or complete regarding any sensitive resources that might be there. So they both suggested it would be a good idea to include an archaeological monitor, and I would, I would ask that that be imposed as a condition of the approval.
The applicant has no objection to that. We would like someone with a license who has the proper credentials to, to monitor the area. One of the two people that Commissioner Hill referenced would be perfectly satisfactory to us during, during, during the basement work. The rest of the work, I don't think is appropriate.
That, that would be the, the gist of my condition also.
Okay, I'll accept that. Jeff, will he accept it? His amendment? Okay?
To clarify, that's to add the, to add a Native American monitor?
No, not, not, a licensed archaeologist.
A licensed archaeologist to observe the excavation of the basement.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Okay, so let's see. One note, we had talked about on the site visit, the fire pits. I see they're still on the plans. Are those to be removed that was talked about? I didn't know if we need to make any updates for that. Should say singular fire pit that was shown on the.
Right now, there's a brick accessway and, you know, a place for people to sit in that area. We're proposing a, a fire pit that would not have any foundation. Do you, I, I didn't think there was an opposition to that at the site.
I thought we talked about just no fire pit at all, but I might be mistaken. I just wanted to.
I, I think, I think you were mistaken. It, it, it would be gas, it would not be wood, there'd be no sparks coming from it at all. And I don't think that, I, I didn't hear any, any statement that the fire pit would go away.
Okay. Okay, then, otherwise, I know, noting along the property line where the garage entrances are, there's a planted area in the, in the plans that's adjacent to an existing hedge, which is probably twelve feet or fifteen, maybe, feet high. In terms of how that planted area is going to be brought into the project plan, will that impact that existing hedge so that we have to, you know, modify that height or anything? You know, maybe in the illustration here, if I can borrow the pointer, wherever it went? If you look at the details on the plans, there's a section, where is it? Somewhere about right in here where it shows a planter to be installed. Will that?
We, we have no, no authority to do anything with that hedge at all.
Okay, so I'll clarify. So looking at illustration, the, the document is, let's just bring it up exactly. One sec. It's A three one B, and on A three one B, in that, roughly that area, you've marked something that says planting area. So just confirm that hedge is not on your property, so it won't be impacted, so no need to touch that hedge.
That's correct.
Okay. Then the next one, let's see. Just in, in, and I recognize, we've had a discussion on the kind of the hardship for the, the lower basement. Just kind of practically speaking, if there is an event which is hosted at the, at the home, what have you, it looked like there's quite a bit of parking space where cars could be accommodated beyond the kind of five assigned parking spots. Just maybe to you, Norm, is, would it be practical that the owners could, say, bring in a valet or something to help deal with that issue if, if that's hit in the future? I mean, just for, for any feedback there?
They'll pretty much have to. They, you know, the, the average person here, I mean, he's got a family, and there's going to be two or three cars that are going to be parked on the site, so that leaves two cars available. And, you know, if you have Thanksgiving dinner, or Hanukkah, or Christmas, or whatever it happens to be, you're going to have a lot more cars than that. So, you know, without, with, with, and I, I'm not trying to bring it up again, but I think the, the subterranean parking vault has been resolved tonight, so there would have to be a, some type of valet, some type of arrangement made.
Yeah, and I'd call that out just in recognition of the hardship you've written, just to point out that there are other ways kind of to accommodate on their property.
There are.
Okay, okay.
No, I mean, you know, you, you can have them park on the street somewhere else and go pick them up. It's, it's inconvenient.
I think there's, what Commissioner Marks is saying is that there's room in the front yard if there were a different design proposed that would be outside of the fire department turnaround. There, there are options. It's a big property.
Yeah, no, there, there, there are. And, and we'll certainly explore those. Maybe we'll look at turf track, or a grasscrete, or something like that, which can support a car.
Okay.
We don't want them driving in the mud.
Right. Okay, well, thank, I just wanted to clarify for that, for that hardship concern.
Let me just make one comment. I just, I agree that the, the double-decker garage is a, is a perfectly logical solution to, to your problem. The problem is that the ordinance just doesn't permit it, and, and the findings, which is not a question of hardship, there are the specific findings that have to be made that are statutory, and, you know, this would be granting a privilege that, that other people wouldn't have. It would be, it's just not, not possible, so, at least not in my mind.
As I said, the ship has already left.
Great house, good piece of property, great view, so congratulations. All right, can we call a question?
Chair Euring, if I may, if we could, based off of Commissioner Jennings' comment, if we could amend the resolution so that staff will modify the reference in the first paragraph, sorry, I'm trying to find the page for you. It's page three.
Cultural Resources is paragraph thirteen, which really needs to be amended. We need to get new language for that.
Of the, of the resolution.
It's, it's for the archaeologist.
For the archaeologist.
Right.
And also, we'd like to change in the first paragraph there, under B variance, nineteen dash zero ten, we can get rid of the one, so it references the correct section of the LIP, you'll say three point six, rather than thirteen point six. That's on page number three. And then I did write down the comment about requiring as a condition of approval on cultural resources. We'll change that to say that a licensed archaeologist shall be present to observe the excavation of the basement.
Okay.
Okay, we accept those.
Yep. All right. Call motion, please, Catherine.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion adjourned.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Aye. Did we vote? Aye?
Yeah.
Okay, we adjourn.